All the being order at 6:30, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. Roll call, please.
President.
Here.
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 Present. We have one trustee attending remotely this evening. First item on the committee, the whole agenda is approval of the July 28th, 2021 Committee of the Hall Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by trustee Pierce, second by trustee Peterson.
Mason.
Oh, Mason. Motion by trustee Mason, second by trustee Peterson. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
I.
Yes.
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 Six in fa- six in favor, none opposed. First item, I'd just like to make one acknowledgement. I personally did not know the gentleman, but I know a lot of you did. I saw recently that I don't want to mispronounce his name, but Leonard Sekulowski recently passed. He was the deputy chief in Antioch and I believe affiliated with the fire department for 44 years, if the information I saw is correct. So we send our condolences to his family and I believe his services are Friday at Strang Funeral Home. So I just want to acknowledge that. The next item on the agenda is the Police Department Promotions. I'll turn that over to Police Chief Gachow.
Good evening. So I'm going to ask. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees. Thanks for having us tonight. As Police Chief, one of the most important things I have accomplished is to identify and develop the future leaders of the department. Tonight I come before you to promote three individuals who have proven not only their strong leadership abilities, but have consistently modeled our core mission of serving and protecting our Antioch community. It's my great honor to come before you this evening to promote Commander Norm Johnson to the rank of Deputy Chief, Sergeant Charles Smith to the rank of Commander, and Officer Bonnerati to the rank of Sergeant. Just like to give you a little bit of history on their career paths. So Commander Johnson joined the department in June of 2001. He was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 2012 and then to his current rank of Commander in 2018. During his time as commander, he has overseen both the support services and operations divisions, giving him the skill sets necessary to assume his new role as Deputy Chief. During his career, he's also served the department in some of the following capacities, just to name a few. School Resource Officer, Juvenile Officer, including being a past president of Lake County Juvenile Officers Association, Evidence Technician, Field Training Officer, Detective, and a Traffic Crash Investigator. Norm holds a bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice from Illinois State University. He is joined this evening by many friends and his sister Lisa, and joining us remotely are his mother Anne, his sister Laura, and his nieces and nephews Michael, Andrew, Amanda, Tommy, and Grace. Sergeant Smith joined the department in June of 2003 after honorably serving our country in the United States Army Reserves from 1997 to 2003, serving under Operation Enduring Freedom. He was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 2016, and he currently serves as the Sergeant Investigation. Through his supervisory experience, he has demonstrated he is well-prepared to assume his new role as the Commander of Operations. During his career, some of his highlights and areas he served as a field training officer, evidence technician, a canine patrol handler, juvenile officer, and undercover with Lake agent with Lake County Meg, and then Assistant Group Supervisor for the gang unit of Lake County Meg. Sergeant Smith is accompanied this evening by his wife Julie, his daughter Mary, his father Tom, and his brother Matt, and he has many family members attending remotely from Arizona. Officer Bonnerati joined the department in February of 2014. Prior to coming to serve with the Village of Antioch, she served with the Round Lake Park PD for 12 years. She is currently assigned as a detective where she has demonstrated her leadership abilities not only within our own department, but within the Lake County law enforcement, most recently being part of a team responsible for developing a protocol that will be implemented countywide whenever law enforcement is responding to crimes of sexual assault. She has also served as a member of the Lake County Major Crash Assistance Team. Audrey holds a bachelor's in criminal justice from North Park University and also recently began coursework toward her master's degree. In attendance with her this evening is former chief of Round Lake PD and current Director of NECASS of Bruce Johnson and several of her friends. Joining her remotely, we have her mommy vet, who is affectionately known throughout the PD as Mama B, her father David, her aunt Diane and Jeanette, uncle Jerry and Joe, cousin Gia, and some of her other closest friends. And I'd be remiss if I forgot to mention that her two cats Roger, Maris, and Pistachio are watching Go To The Way From Home. At this time, I would like to invite the clerk to swear the officers into the new ranks.
I, Audrey Bonnerati, having been appointed as Sergeant of the Village of Antioch and the County of Lake, soundly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Sergeant to the best of my ability. I, Charles Smith, having been appointed as Commander of the Village of Antioch and the County of Lake, to soundly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Commander to the best of my ability.
I, Norman Johnson, having been appointed as Deputy Chief of the Village of Antioch Police Department and the County of Lake, to soundly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Deputy Chief to the best of my ability.
I will. No injuries for my sister. She probably has all the right to do it right now. We're going to keep on the level.
Thank you, Chief Gachow, and thank you, officers. All I ask is you give me a chance in the golf outing this year, okay?
Well, you got some polls, so Mr. Mayor, you got some polls.
Your Honor, since I'm not there, can I offer my congratulations virtually?
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, enjoy the rest of your evening. The next item on the agenda is citizens wishing to address the board. I'll let everybody leave the room that's leaving, and then we'll see if there's anybody on Zoom that wants to address the board. Clerk Romine will give instructions on how to do that. Actually, Amy will do that. Thank you.
If you're joining from a telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. On an Android or iOS device, tap more, then raise hand. On a computer, click raise hand in the Zoom controls.
Anybody in the audience wish to address the board? Okay. We will move along to regular business today. We will be discussed, there'll be a discussion regarding the final strategic marketing plan update, and we have our marketing group here to present that for us live. Administrator Kim will give a brief introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So yeah, we've made great progress with our strategic marketing plan and thank you. And we, we would like to present the work, hard work of Rachel and Marissa. They're from Altogether, and the Clue Group is also included. I don't know if he's on the presentation. He's not here. Okay. So I'm going to let, just let them take it from here, but I think you'll be very pleased with the progress we've made, and hopefully we'll get some input as we move forward. We're not finalized yet, but there's going to be some questions at the end. So this is definitely a session where we'd appreciate the board's input as we finalize this plan.
Thank you all. Let me pull up this presentation real quick so everyone can see it. Okay. So, okay, it depends on there. We heard from you all last time. We presented some initial marketing priorities as well as a draft of the new brand, the revised brand. And so from that, we put together a brand guide. So this is a document to help village staff and the new communication staff that's coming on to implement this brand. And so I'm going to pass it to Marissa to talk through some changes to the messaging and the story, and then I'll talk through the logo and the marketing strategies.
Thank you, Rachel.
You know, my mic's a little closer, just so I can hear you at home on Zoom.
Of course. Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Okay.
Yeah.
And I, we wanted to just spend the initial part of our presentation, reading through the story. While you have heard this before, we have made some tweaks based on input. So I'm going to go through this, and then we're going to just quickly talk through the messaging framework. The story of Antioch, whether you're here for a lifetime or a day, Antioch is a place to breathe easy. Its access to the chain of lakes and thousands of acres of wooded preserves, coupled with its laid-back, small-town vibes, are an antidote for the overloaded. Lose yourself in nature by hiking the preserves, horseback riding, and cross-country skiing along the state park trails, or simply look up at the hundreds of stars in our expansive night skies. Make your way down Main Street, taking in the vintage vibes of the historic buildings, home to locally-owned shops, eateries, and bars, or connect to the people that make this place feel like home, at one of Antioch's concerts, parades, or events that fill the streets and parks. While being in Antioch can feel like a walk down memory lane, you'll also experience an energy pointing to the future, to investment in downtown, small business and industries, and the next generation of people and families that will continue to keep Antioch authentic by nature. So that is your story. This is your brand bible. This is the way that you're going to talk about yourselves, and I just want to note that each of you are very important brand ambassadors for the village. And so we want to make sure that you leave here today equipped with the right words and the right messaging to do that. So as you remember from the last presentation, we are keeping your current tagline, "Authentic by Nature." But what we heard through this process is it didn't quite authentic, didn't capture everything that Antioch has to offer. And so in this brand guideline, we've outlined the rules around a more flexible framework and different words that you can use with "by nature," substituting "authentic." If it follows these brand guidelines and it allows you to speak to different target audiences. So the first is relaxed by nature. So this goes back to that story and the idea of coming here. What we heard is that when you come to Antioch and you, and you get here, you can breathe easy. It's, it's an escape and it's a release, whether you're on, you know, the lakes or on the trails or even downtown. It feels like you can just take a breath. The other is big-hearted by nature. So if you remember, we originally had collective, and we heard from a lot of you that that just didn't quite resonate. And so we changed it to big-hearted and working with a downtown group and thinking about how that encapsulates family and welcoming and the big hearts of what we've been touched by, that I, the people here, as well as the local characters. And by local characters, we mean a lot of the personalities that are here and the small business owners and the people that have been in this community for generations. Another is storied by nature, the idea of discovery and all of these untold stories and legends. Later on in the presentation, we're going to talk about a placemaking initiative that's going to help us uncover some of these stories and really lean into this messaging, but it's about the generations and the heritage of this place. And then nostalgic by nature, that when you are walking down Main Street, you feel these vintage vibes and the memories, but that's paired with the evolution, right? The, the future and the investment that you are all doing here with us, with the Lakota Group and your downtown beautification process, and all of the other plans and initiatives that are coming out of the village. So this is your flexible messaging. These are the words that you want to hit on when you're talking about the village and about downtown, and we hope that they resonate with you as much as they've resonated with us and others that we've shared this with. And finally, the last one, that is Main Street by nature, right? So really leaning into the Main Street character, but combines this relaxed, the story, the big-hearted, the nostalgic, and the evolution. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Rachel to talk about the logo.
So yeah, at the last meeting, we talked about how this is your original logo, and there's some limitations of it. There, it doesn't work in certain formats on different colored backgrounds, and there's, the typeface feels a little dated, but we didn't want to totally go in a different direction. And so this was the logo that was approved at the last meeting. It embraces the character and the structure of the original logo, but it updates it and modernizes it and is in a format that can be a little bit more flexible. We also expanded that into a few, a few different brand marks. And so at the original meeting, we had a version of this in the other logo that had the, the leaf on the A, but we revised it to be kind of coming off the middle and have different variations. We also talked about, you know, the village being important to the character of this logo. And so the, the core logo has the Village of Antioch. In certain instances, you can use it with the logo, but the, the main version is the one you see on the left that's just Village of Antioch. And then in instances where you need to use it at a really small scale, you can remove the village, but that's, you know, an alternate logo, not the main logo. We have showed how it could be used on different colored backgrounds, as well as on top of photos, as well as expanded the color palette. And so the, the colors on top were part of the original color palette. They're updated a little bit to be fit with the, you know, nostalgic vibes of the brand, and then expanded it to a few other colors so that you have more flexibility when you're creating branded content. We also talked about, or heard from people that there was a need to expand this village logo and have consistency throughout departments. And so, you know, we proposed the system of, ooh, system of logos that would work for different departments, that uses the, the A brand mark and, and the typeface from the logo, but expands it. Hopefully that's not the storm coming in. Starting to get nervous. So that's the brand guide. It's, you know, more of a technical document to help people who are implementing the brand to have everything that they need. The marketing plan is broken into these four main priorities, and those are what we presented to you last time. So this is just the more in-depth how you do that. So this first objective is to reorganize around a central communications hub. We heard from a lot of people that there's a lot of people doing communications, but it's not clear who that lead voice should be. And so we're proposing that you establish an entity called Explore Antioch that would be that central communications hub, because it doesn't always make sense for the village to be pushing information about events and, you know, speaking to visitors as well as residents, when they're also, you're also sharing information about, you know, when snowplowing should happen and really technical information. And so we want to take that, that technical information, that is what the village should, should be sharing communications about, and anything that's more community events, celebrating this place should be in the central communications hub. So it outlines the, the core roles of this hub, and that's social media, a website, print, and digital marketing and events, and then administering all the content. So we also have different people who are going to have roles in that. We've been talking to the chamber and how they could still continue doing events, but the, the communications of those events and advertising around them would be through this communications hub. We've talked to the downtown task force and how they can serve as the board for this communications hub and, and guide the content. And then this, the new village communication staffer that's going to be brought on soon would really be the lead person. They would lead this initiative. And so once you have that established, the first two things you need to do are have a website that's, that gets live. And so we have a webpage, homepage design that links to the different pages that we're recommending, as well as establishing social channels. Another thing for the website that we've heard from a lot of people is that there needs to be a collaborative event calendar, something that brings together events from the chamber, from the library, from anyone who's hosting a community-wide event can submit an event on this calendar, and it would all be hosted there. And so this is different than your village board meetings and your commission meetings. This is just community events. And the whole idea of this communications hub is that it's able to speak to residents as well as visitors. And so if someone's coming to town, they'll find their way to this website and be able to see, oh, it's Thursday night, there's concert series happening. Once all of these digital platforms are in place, we're recommending then to expand into more traditional marketing, like billboards and, you know, brochures and those types of things. You know, we outlined a number of itineraries that you could start to market, that people can do in, in Antioch. So we think those are important, but you, we think you kind of get, need to get your ducks in a row first, so that by the time you're starting to attract visitors, they have a really nice website to go to, they have a nice social media page to go to. The second objective is to focus on inbound marketing. And so that's really making sure that everyone is telling a story, the same story of Antioch that, that Marissa talked about, and that, that information that people are talking about attracts people to this place. We also have outlined different guidelines for engaging with residents on social media. We know that's something that has been, you know, an issue in the past, and things can get really negative. And so we've outlined some strategies about how to respond when comments are negative and how to create content that's more positive for people to engage with on a regular basis. We also talk about building public relations capacity. And so that's more than press releases. It's doing media outreach. It's identifying who are the media sources that you want to put information out to. And then expanding the presence of these strategies by partnering with organizations like Explore Lake County to, and the library and the chamber, everyone who's involved in marketing Antioch, making sure they're all on the same page. The third objective is, you know, in addition to the Explore Antioch digital communications, the Village of Antioch also has room to grow in their digital communications. So one of the first things that we heard was that people love the idea of Connections Magazine, but the way that it's executed right now means that the people who are creating content can't create relevant content because it only comes out quarterly. And so we've been talking, Jim has been having conversations with the people who created Connections, the school district, to shift this to a more digital, weekly e-newsletter format. But we also heard that there needs to be a print version of this. And so we have strategies so that, you know, when this newsletter goes out, a print version of it can be printed and live at the senior center and live at Village Hall. So there's still a print version, but you're getting more relevant information to people on a more regular basis. Another, you know, broad recommendation we heard is that there just needs to be more communication that, that right now you hear about an event, but then a couple of weeks go by and you forget that it was even happening. And so that's really comes in with hiring this communication staffer to build the capacity within the village to help increase consistent communication. We have some action items, targeted updates that need to be made to the village website. The first one is to prepare a content audit, so looking through all of the different pages of the website and determining where there's overlap, where it can be condensed. Right now, it's, you know, when you've had a website for a while, you add and you add and you add, and at some point you need to kind of refine. And so that's this first item. We also are recommending that you combine a few different of the calendars that are on this village website and link that as well to the Explore Antioch website. So this, there's one website on the village website, or there's one calendar on the village website, and it just focuses on, you know, meeting minutes and some of the Parks Department stuff that's on there. We also recommend modernizing the online ordinances so that they can be searchable. So if someone has a question about an ordinance, it's a little bit easier to look through, and then updating the branding on the website, which will be part of the implementation strategy. We've outlined for social media who should be the lead poster and when things should be cross-posted, so for different types of information, who, whether the village should lead or Explore Antioch should lead, and when cross-posting should happen. And then the last one is really thinking more strategically about events and placemaking. And so we did a survey to the community at large, as well as business owners, about which Antioch events people love and which people want to see changes to. And we got about 200 responses, and it's, it's, it's interesting. People love Antioch events. It's not, the top four ones aren't going to surprise anyone. The Fourth of July Parade, It's Thursday Concert Series, The Taste of Summer, The Wine Walk. People really cherish these events, but there was also a desire to see changes, to see things being reinvented and reimagined. There's also a desire to see more diversity in the type of events, so more family events, less drinking events, more that are not so gendered. There's a lot that are, you know, women's drinking events. They should be brought in so that you can go with your partner as well and feel comfortable with that. They, we also got a ton of ideas from the public on, as you're reimagining events, what those could look like. So for winter events, because right now a lot of the events run from May through December, so we're proposing expanding more into winter programming and looking at things like a film festival at the Antioch Theater, or a Fire and Ice Festival that combines, you know, ice sculptures with hot chocolate or trips to Walmart, as well as more year-round events. There was a lot of interest in doing fitness-related events or more healthy lifestyle-related events, community talent show. So there's just lots of fodder in here for how to reimagine events in the future and how to work with the chamber to do that. We also proposed a few different ideas for placemaking initiatives that celebrate Antioch's character. So this first one is something that we're moving forward with this fall, which is really exciting. It is a scavenger hunt to discover local legends and lore. So there'll be prizes for people to use this app called Eventy and explore the community and explore local businesses and the historic photos. So we're working with the Historic Society to help program that. We also have been talking with the village, as well as with Lakota Group, about ghost signs in downtown and how you all have these ghost signs, but a lot of them are so worn that you can't see them. So restoring some of them and then adding new ones based on historic businesses that used to be in downtown Antioch, and including the community in both of these, soliciting ideas and, and stories from historic places, as well as voting on the, the type of designs that could go in part of these new ghost signs. The last one was something that we heard from our stakeholder meetings, was that this Antioch skate park should be a place for teens, and we need a place for teens, but right now it feels just disinvested and it feels like a not a safe place to be. And so we have an idea of how that could be reimagined and working with local teens to use cheap things like paint and just make it feel invested in and design it with teenagers in mind by them so that they have some claim to this space. The final one is incorporating the brand throughout the downtown street skate. So we have been talking to the Lakota Group, have shared with them all their materials. They're excited to incorporate the new brand and the, the story and the ideas of these ghost signs into their plan. So excited to see where that leads. So our questions for you are, are there any marketing initiatives that we have not addressed that you'd love to see? As trustees, do you feel equipped to? As trustees, do you feel equipped to speak to the character of Antioch and act as a brand ambassador? And as we finalize the next steps for implementation of the marketing strategies and brand rollout, what questions or concerns do you have?
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your hard work. I'll, um, obviously start with trustee Pierce and his questions and comments.
Well, first of all, I saw my car in a big package, so I'm gonna have to charge you for that, you know, to make some money here. Yes, uh, but secondly, I, I really liked a lot of what I saw in this plan. A couple of questions that popped to mind tonight are, um, you mentioned in 4.4, the last one, uh, expanding, uh, the, incorporate the, the branding into the downtown area. Um, where would we determine that? Because I know when we're looking, you know, we're talking about Main Street, but we also got Orchard and Lake Street. And, you know, businesses are stretching, starting to stretch up towards North Avenue and out towards Down on 83. Is there a way to incorporate our branding throughout the town and throughout the business areas, not just the downtown, so everybody is included? Um, that'd be my first question. And then the second one is, um, um, I, I forgot, I, I got too long-winded there, I'm sorry.
No worries, the first one's a good one. Um, so we did include some ideas for updated signage, we think that's probably, you, you have signs out there that have the current logo. And so we proposed some updated signage as well as new signage. And so I think that's one way to expand things broader than downtown. In terms of capturing the, you know, downtown area that's more than just Main Street, I think that the banners that we have showed are a really easy way to do that. There, it's not hard to put a banner on a street pole, and I think that gives some visual consistency. But I also think this comes back to the street state plan that Lakota is doing. And it, it kind of depends on, you know, where in their plan all this fits in. I'm sure there's going to be benches and receptacles and all those things, and the brand can be incorporated in all of those in really creative ways. So they're talented designers and I trust that they're going to find a good way to make it all work together.
All right, thank you. Did you remember yet?
Nope.
Okay.
It's gone.
Trustee Maisick?
Just a question, Q10, you've got 80%. Is that people that answered what question, Q10? 80% that worked here?
Uh, I'm not following, where?
Q10. In the packet, it says Q10. Where they get their, checked it all to buy Q10, tell us about your relationship with Antioch, where they get the information?
This is the survey.
Survey?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, the survey, here's, here's my, you brought it up. So my question with the survey, and I always pick on surveys. So when you get a skewed survey, most of the information was received, 80% of the survey was people that work for the village.
That is, I, are you sure?
That's what it says on your paperwork right here, 80%.
It says, I live here, I work here.
I live here, I work here, or, so it's, it's.
I work here, 80% is from this survey.
I mean, are there 200 people that work for the village?
So you're saying, so it, it, but it was, it was live or work here, correct? I just.
I live here is one question in the survey.
People that work in the village of Antioch, not for the village. Right, so work within the village.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense. The other, the other statement in the branding of Antioch, Antioch's in the Bible. I don't understand, when we put stuff together, people, when they move here, it's always on Facebook, where's a good church? Families Church, and, and you guys, you, you left that big part of Antioch out. People come to families, people come outside Antioch, they come to our churches. And that's part of the branding of Antioch is being a family-oriented town.
I think that's a really good point, I think that's something that we haven't, you know, included as part of the story. But I think that it, it does speak to the big-hearted character of the.
Because the churches in Antioch, they divorce care, they do AAA, they do a lot of children's events. You know, daddy-daughter night outs, they do a lot of events where, a lot of other communities don't do that with the churches. Churches do pick up where government leaves off.
Yeah.
And you left that out of the story.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a very good point. And we did, in our, um, kind of stakeholder engagement process, did talk to a lot of the religious organizations and churches pastors here. And so I think that that's something that we can explore. And because I, as Rachel mentioned, I think that that is, it's captured by Big Hearted, but it's not explicitly stated.
Because that's probably when someone moves here, that's the number one question, where's a good church? On Facebook that I see.
Yep.
And I always recommend them, go to my church, it's the best.
Thank you, trustee Maisick, I appreciate you pointing that out.
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
Um, I'd just like to say that I, I thought that the whole study was so well-done and, um, very easy to read through and really understand what you were trying to accomplish. And, um, it makes a lot of sense to me and I really enjoyed it. And I look forward to implementing this, or help, not me, helping to implement this.
Well, you are a brand ambassador.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of an exciting time and, and I think we have a clear path with this and direction, so thank you, well done.
We appreciate your leadership in this.
All right, thank you, trustee Peterson, trustee Bluthard?
Um, really, I'm just gonna echo the same thing that everyone else kind of said. I thought it was well-done, I thought it included everything that I would want to see. And, uh, I, I just look forward to putting it in place.
Thank you.
Trustee Bourbon?
Thank you.
I feel like I'm gonna be really repetitive because I do. I agree with trustee Maisick about making sure that, that the church aspect is in there. I, I love all the tweaks that you guys have, have made. And it, it is, it's very exciting, it's something really for people to look forward to in this town, so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dominiac?
I echo everyone's comments, this is phenomenal work, I think you've done a terrific job. Um, I'm excited for it to be implemented. I do have a couple points though, that, um, if we could go back to the story, um, I don't know if that's something you can easily, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get to it.
Um, I think what we need to do is, um, in the second paragraph, where you talk about make your way down Main Street, taking in the vintage vibe to the historic buildings, home to locally-owned shops, eateries and bars. I think the feedback that you got from the Economic Development Task Force, and I'm supportive of that and hope that the other trustees would be, is that we were going to take out bars, um, that we're trying to create, uh, a vibe here that is not, um, the historical, Antioch is full of bars. So I'd like to see that removed, um, if that's an option for us. Um, the other thing is, um, when you talk in Objective One, you talk about a downtown task force. I think we need to clarify, there is no downtown task force. There's an Economic Development Task Force which advises the staff and the board regarding economic development across the village. Um, there is an organization called Shop Antioch, which is basically, um, one person that I think we're all familiar with, Heather Fenzel, who's done a lot of work to market, um, shopping and dining here in Antioch. So I think as we tweak this, we need to, um, clarify and remove a, a notation about a downtown task force because we don't have one. The other thing is, I echo, uh, trustee Pierce's comments about, um, how do we look at all of the village, um, in terms of the businesses. But I also want to go to, um, the banners, when you have the banners up there, and I know that those are just demonstrations of examples. But when you're talking about a business name, um, one of the things that, and I brought this up in the past, and I'm going to be redundant and bring it up again, uh, last year, we had a group of business owners, uh, I think there were seven or eight of them that worked on coming up with the downtown logo and, um, trade, trade tagline. And I believe that that's been sent to you, it was downtown Antioch, and, um, it said more than expected. And the rationale for that is because when we ask the question to the business owners as to, what do people say when you come into your, they come into your shop or your eatery, they say, gosh, we didn't know this was here, this is more than we thought Antioch was all about. So I'd just like to propose that perhaps on these banners where you have downtown Antioch, that we could consider putting in more than expected to kind of, um, bring that work that was done by so many people, spent so many hours on it, um, to the forefront. Um, and then I love the, all of the work on, um, communication, I think that's really critically important, appreciate that. And, um, I love the ghost signs, I think that's a terrific idea. I am going to again bring up what I brought up many, many times over the past years. And I know you haven't been around that long, but we have a community building that has a blank wall next to the, uh, village hall that when you're driving south on 83, it's a big empty wall. And it has been recommended by, um, a couple of people in the past, and I'd like to bring it up again, that if we're going to do ghost signs, that we paint whatever logo we ended up with on that wall. So that as people are traveling south on 83 into the downtown area, they see the logo. Um, but other than that, I think this is great work and I'm really excited about, um, the progress that you've made.
Thank you so much, Jesse. I do want to address, um, just that, your initial comment, um, on the, the story. So it was my recollection of, of the conversation that we had with the downtown folks. We had actually had bars first, so we had bars and I think we had, you know, antique shops and eateries. And two of the things that we heard, one was we shouldn't lead with bars, which I totally agree with. And the other was that we're more than just antique shops, while we have antique shops, we have a lot of other different shops. So we switched that to locally-owned shop. I would like to make the case, but of course we're open to, to thoughts and comments on this, to keep bars. Because I think, you know, we're talking to, to residents here, but also to visitors. And I think that having some bars is not necessarily, um, a bad thing for your community. I think that it's a, a driver for destination tourism, it's what people are looking for when we think about our target audiences. And I think here it's a good balance where we're not leading with it, um, which is a really good point, but that it's a part of your offerings. And what we're emphasizing here is how much you all have to offer, one of those being kind of, you know, the eating and, and drinking experience.
And, and I hear what you're saying, and certainly it's not my decision, but then I look at your data and all the people that are complaining about how there's so much activity focused on alcohol, I think that's why I would support removing that, but certainly I'm not the decision-maker, it's just my input.
I appreciate your thoughts on that.
Of course, trustee Pierce?
Um, on, on, on this issue, I, I can see where the word bars may have a negative connotation. But even our bars can be found to be more than expected. They, they, they have so much more and they've got food in them, they've got entertainment in them. So maybe instead of using the word bars, we use nighttime establishments or nighttime entertainment, or something that sounds more, more appealing to the downtown. It, it's just my thought, because our, our, most of our bars are generally nice places with, with good people in them and, and they, they, they do bring in a lot of people at night for entertainment. So whether it's Taylor's on Top who's playing music or, you know, or the Lodge, it's got the back room for group events. Or, you know, the Limerick that's doing fundraisers, they're all helping the community somehow.
I love, I love that idea of entertainment, because I think it speaks to, you know, the theater and the movies and everything else that you have here. So we will explore that, and I think that could be a really good balance, of still emphasizing that there's all kinds of entertainment here, including bars, but not just limited to bars.
Yeah, I like that, trustee Pierce, that's a good suggestion.
And, and may I, theoretically, we only have one bar in, in the village, which is the Limerick. Because the Lodge, kids can go in there and sit at the table and eat. So you can't, the kids can't sit at the, the bar area. But we only have one bar and you can't sit there and say, hey, we're gonna sit there and advertise these guys, but not you. We're, we're gonna redline you guys. Even though they, they generate sales tax and everything, that's what this is all about. So, and, and, and Taylor's on, well, Taylor's on Top, I guess, would be considered, but they serve food too. But that's where people go for date night. And that's a huge social event, that's where people go, hey, let's meet over here. You would, you, you know, us, us four, then we'll go to EMM and L or wherever. Yeah, that's, that's a huge, that's a huge thing with Taylor's on Top.
No, we appreciate that, and I think that including nightlife, but broadening it.
Yeah.
Addresses that. Um, in terms of the other comments on the, the downtown logo, I, that's something that we're still working with Heather on, that's why I didn't really include a, a lot about that, because she was going to take the original brand that was created and, and try and combine it with this new brand. And so we're still want to work with the, um, Economic Development Task Force, uh, to how, and Shop Antioch to help make that something that they're proud of and that they feel ownership over. But we appreciate all your thoughts and comments.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Trustee Peterson, yep?
Uh, yeah, I believe the, uh, one bar in Antioch does serve food. The Limerick, you can go in and sit down and eat.
They do, they do.
So, um, basically they do do, so all of them have food. Maybe we could say the word pub instead of.
Pub or tavern.
Tavern would be great, you know, something like that. Or pub, yeah, yeah, so.
It's a good place.
It's more charming.
Yeah.
Possibly, um, but I think we should leave it in there, I agree with them. We're, we're speaking to the people at large, we want them to come in and we want them to have fun and come back. So I think bars, that genre should stay there.
All right. Anything else? Thank you for your presentation, I would, um, entertain a motion to, um, not, just to take role that we can move this to the next, uh, board meeting. Any, a poll that we could move this to the next board meeting for approval of the current marketing and brand guide. If there's any objection, otherwise we will put it on the next agenda, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
All right, next item on the, um, regular business, the cow is discussion regarding a facade grant request from Antioch Cyclery located at 890 Main Street. Mr. Garrigan will present.
Yes, thank you, your honor, this matter again comes before you this evening, uh, for a facade grant. If you bear with me, I'm gonna try to share this. So you have me for you, um, applicant for 890 Main Street, Antioch Cyclery, they're requesting a facade grant. Um, I've identified the historic significance, uh, consistent with our facade program. We, uh, have identified this as potentially a historic structure. Um, the property itself is, uh, as you can see on the, on the first slide, is building to the left, right next to the existing current finance building. Um, the applicant has had a very successful bike shop, uh, for many, many years on Main Street, it's been one of our major retail users. Uh, they had actually a phenomenal year, uh, during COVID, believe it or not, actually ran out of bikes. Um, but they are coming this evening, um, before you for a request for a facade grant. Um, I've asked Emery Patterson, who is contractor, I believe you have his initial preliminary proposal for this. Um, what the applicant's proposed is some of the substance is to restore the front facade facing Main Street. Uh, that facade was painted, uh, many years ago. Um, so the second picture here, uh, that you see, uh, shows the current condition of the property, um, which has been obviously modified over the years, does really not reflect its historical context. Advocate is proposing to restore the original facade to its original historic appearance. So that, um, would require a reglable of the paint and restoration of the brick. Um, I'll allow Mr. Patterson to maybe specifically outline that proposal. Um, the other aspect of this proposal, um, is, um, the southern elevation, uh, there's extensive, um, damage to the brick. This is an all-brick building, again, a very historic building with, with age. Um, there's actually a significant amount of restoration work that has to be completed under southern elevation. Um, so again, the applicant is requesting, uh, uh, actually a facade grant this evening. Um, what they're proposing is consistent with the village's facade grant design standards. As you know, we adopted those guidelines consistent with the Secretary's, uh, Interior Standards to try to bring back these buildings to their historical appearance. That is the goal of this program. Um, based on the applicant's preliminary proposal, um, there would be a replacement of actually a substantial amount of the brick that's been damaged. You can see the water damage, specifically the water damage on the southern elevation, especially at grades substantial, which would require, um, a fair amount of replacement of brick. Um, so in, in summary, the applicant, uh, is, this overall proposal, uh, as you've had right here, is approximately $129,000. Significant proposal, actually it's been modified slightly, I did receive a revised summary, uh, that number has gone up uh, because some, some additional flashing work that has to be completed adjacent to our existing building. Um, that's our sister building that shares space with the village of Antioch. Although, allow Mr. Patterson to outline that specifically. Also, the applicant is. Also, the applicant is again requesting approximately a facade grant of approximately sixty-four thousand dollars. It is within budget. As you know, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a facade program this year. So this grant, while it's significant, would be within the village's budget as allocated for the facade program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emery Patterson, who's actually done extensive work. He's a contractor for the rivalry, has done extensive restoration work in Lake Forest and all over the North Shore. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emery.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me here today for this evening and Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to meet you and thank you for your attempt to meet me over at the rivalry, which was kind of botched, but we'll meet another time. The Antioch Cyclory is a really nice looking building and. I see this with a lot of brick buildings where. From a construction standpoint, not just a historical standpoint, I've done a lot of historic restorations. The most notable one being at two twenty-eight West Illinois Street in Chicago. And that is an old firehouse from eighteen eighty-seven. And that was where I kind of got my sea legs into historic restorations. It was a really neat project, but I learned a lot in that process and I've carried that out to a lot of other. Historical upgrades that I've done and one of which is with with brick. A lot of people think of it as just a hard material, but it's actually more like a sponge. It wicks in and wicks out moisture. And when you look at these old structures, especially not just this one, but other ones in your downtown, you're going to have to. Look at how these old buildings are actually draining the water that it collects just from, you know. Bad flashings and roofings, old clay roof tiles and just not whicking that moisture out or leaving that water out. And with the Antioch Cyclory, when Rick had asked me to come and take a look at it, we looked at the building extensively. And I have to tell you, it's it's a really opportune moment because. This particular building has a corridor from a village-owned lot right into the downtown of Antioch. And I can't tell you how many clients I have that will pay me to try and replicate that look on that south corridor with the. The the brick that's mostly painted, but then you have outcroppings where it's kind of weathered. It looks really nice, but it also showcases a problem of. Frost wedging, which is where the moisture stays in the brick because it's not shedding out, it's not getting enough sunlight, it's not. Flowing out of the brick the way it's supposed to, so it stays in the brick and then you get the freeze thaw cycles that, you know, expand the water particles. And we end up with what's called face balling. So this is one of those buildings that is a prime candidate to. Use a type of flashing system we've installed in other similar situations to help shed that moisture out. And hopefully in the process segue into. Updating that corridor for the city or village of Antioch at another day. To Mr. Garrigan's point, with the front of this facade, we would be taking a more minimally invasive process of. Surface blasting with glass beads instead of with sand. Because when you use the sand, it's more abrasive. And it also creates a lot of dust for the neighboring buildings and it's a lot more to clean up. In this case, the glass beads, they are less abrasive and they actually fall and they're. Easy to clean up just with broom sweeping and, you know, actually spring the hose to at like a directed area. So there's a lot of a lot of thought that we put into this and, you know, one of the things that Mr. Gary had brought up in our most recent site meeting was. I proposed a storefront system that's a little bit more modern. But he asked me how we might be able to make it look a little more historic. Once we remove all of the paint from the front. You know, we it would look very, you'd have old and new, which wouldn't clash or which would kind of clash. And so to bridge that gap, Mr. Garrigan actually made a wonderful suggestion, which was right in front of us, right across the street at Waldron Building. And they put in these nice wood doors and I think that that's something we could work into a storefront system. Very well and put a nice transom above and, you know, bring back more of the historic character and mesh the the old with the new. While making a building that's going to or updated building that's going to last many more years. So with that being said, I would love to entertain any questions you guys might have. I'll delve as deep as you would like to with any other construction methods that I'm proposing or how we would actually do some of these things.
Thank you. Trustee Pierce.
It's hard to see in the in the in the one picture of the old downtown. What exactly it's going to look like when you're done and it's a major investment, so. My my question actually is to Mr. Garrigan. What do you think the impact is this this is going to have on the downtown appearance? I mean, personally, I love the the Antioch Cyclory shop. I remember it was the. You know, it's been there forever.
Right, let's go back to the historic picture, which I think is a good discussion point. This is the appearance that occurs based on my discussion. It's wondering that this is probably appears sometime in the nineteen forties. This building was actually constructed probably sometime in the nineteen twenties. It actually, we're not originally, I believe, a dealership and then it was converted into a bowling alley. And you see in this picture right here. So we asked what the significance is. I know this is an odd angle. Sometimes we only have limited historic pictures. This is the best historic picture I could find. The actual impact, it's it's a significant building. It's actually a fairly good sized building. Probably one of the larger buildings on this side of the block of Main Street. I think your ultimate goal, whenever you have possibly a restoration, trying to bring back the original brick. If at all possible, based on its condition. And so bringing the building back to its original brick. Appearance, I think would improve the overall impact of this side of Main Street, the block. As you know, we're seeing more investment down down here with Station Fifty-One across the street. I think this would have. A major impact in improving the appearance of this side of the block. Obviously, the building right next to it, which is currently the finance department. It was really modified, I'm not sure, sometime back in the sixties, so maybe they could speak better to that, but. That was a wonderful Spanish Porsche building at one time. You can see the historical significance of that building. We've always had discussions about somewhere down the road, maybe bring that building back to its original appearance. But so I would I would submit respectfully, I think that bringing the overall, removing the white paint. Which I think is really not sensitive to the current historical significance of this building would have a substantial impact. It's a goal of our facade program. Build bring the buildings back to their historical appearance. And also, obviously, the applicant, I'm not I'm not sure you've been into the bike shop. The applicant has made a major investment and has continued plans to make a major investment on the interior renovation. He's already done that and will continue continue that over the next year. He's been working with one of the, this is one of the largest giant franchises of any bike bike shops in Northern Illinois. So the applicant is committed to making a major investment. Inside the building at his own expense. So we've been discussing this project with the applicant over the past several years.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Maisig.
I got no questions.
Trustee Peterson.
I have no questions. I just have a comment. It's our intention to improve the downtown. And without losing the charm of yesterday, but still going toward the future. And bringing foot traffic to downtown and improving the buildings. I love the idea of the doors, the wooden doors. To give that little charm and I'm I'm. I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, trustee Bluthard.
Just one question, is the whole south side going to be redone?
It would not be the whole south side. The brick walls are broken up into wides, so it's a three wide wall. And so it wouldn't be the whole front wide on the south exterior. What we would be doing is taking out a section all along the bottom of the wall, about sixteen to eighteen inches high. And doing a flashing system that brings any water trapped that gets trapped behind or forward. Then any of the bricks that are beyond their structural capacity, it would be spot removal and replacement. So we might take out a small section here or there and replace them.
But the the paint would all be gone, correct?
No, on the south side of the wall, you know, we talked extensively about it and thought it would be really nice to actually keep it. Because like I mentioned earlier, I can't tell you how many requests I get from people nowadays that try to replicate that look. And it's an expensive look to do and you've got it, you know, it's why eliminate it.
Also, I'm sorry, I did not add also, and that's a good point, that this does have an economic development aspect. We are actually currently working with the owner of the J.J. Blinkers building. About potentially a restaurant to the to 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 the adjacent building. So this alley, this colonnade, channel, however you want to define it, really has potential. A potential reuse of this whole area. So it's it's an important project from that perspective, too.
All right, thank you. Trustee Berman.
No questions or comments.
Thank you, trustee Domeniac.
No, the only thing I wanted to was to Michael's point, the note that I had made that. We're going to be looking at the alleys and trying to enhance those and use that as part of our downtown streetscape. So I think it's important that we do do that part of the building as well, but. So, yeah, I'm in support of this.
I said one question, could, do you have like a rendering or a final rendering? I know we have the historic picture, but. Do you guys have any plans drawn out yet on the?
I don't have a rendering. There's not been any architectural drawings for this to date. If that's something that could be, that would be required, we'd have to go down that avenue. But I could help and work with Mr. Garrigan here to come up with some physical samples of other similar like projects.
I think before, if there's general support to move, bring us back to the village board, I think we can work on a general elevation through a sketch shop. And bring back some materials so the board will have an idea of what it will look like.
Perfect. All right, any other discussion? If so, any objection to moving this to the next board meeting? All right, if not, we'll move it to the next board meeting in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Have one.
Any other business that needs to be raised in the. Town meeting before we adjourn? Oh. Yeah, there's one more. Administrator Kime, next item is general discussion regarding traffic concerns.
Thank you, your honor. So in your packet, you have. Resolution and policy that was adopted in twenty sixteen relative to traffic calming in the committee. I can go over that if you'd like. Would you like me to go over the policy? Or have you all read it and are familiar with it? So the way this has been working, getting a feedback from the computer. The way it's been working is the Director of Public Works, representative from the Police Department, myself, along with Sherry Holben from the Public Works Department, who. Has been. Meeting on a regular basis to. Process the traffic complaints. In the packet, I've included a few. I think in total, over the five years that we've been doing this, we've seen about forty-four, forty-five complaints in total. A lot of requests for stop signs. There's also usually speeding requests. I would say the vast majority of those two things. You know, I'd like to see a stop sign here. You, the usual case would be. I almost saw a kid get hit by a car and a bicycle. We need a stop sign here. Or I saw a speeder in my street. We need to reduce the speed limit. In those cases, most of the time, the committee will meet, discuss it, try to determine, you know, is there a real problem? Is this just a one-off incident? And what we'll do is have a usually directed enforcement by the police and or we'll hang the the speed monitor signs throughout the village. To try to collect data and see, you know, how many cars are coming, how fast are they going in different tranches? How many are five over, ten over and so on? And try to determine what we know, is there a real problem to address? I will say in most cases. The the result is we do not determine from the data that there is a problem that needs to be addressed. If if we were to put a stop sign on every intersection where a kid almost got hit by a bicycle, you'd have a stop sign at every single intersection. You'd never be, there'd be no free flow of traffic. But the goal is to identify. Real problems and and adjust them. Trustee Pierce has forwarded a request for the board to consider. A a speed table initiative in Oakwood Knoll, specifically on Oakwood, I believe, and Maplewood. So the committee has had four or five complaints related to Oakwood or Maplewood. One was really bridge wood. As you go over the bridge to the north from Maplewood. But there has been some observed speeding there and we put some data, we put the speed collection data in your packet so you could see it. And I'm gonna, I'd like the police chief to come up and kind of go over, you know, what we've observed with our data collection.
So as you saw in your packet, we did a two-week campaign with the speed monitors, collecting data twenty-four seven. In the four hundred block of Maplewood, near Maplewood and Meadow Court. And then the three hundred block of Liquid Drive. We also were able to collect data for three straight weeks in the two hundred block of Oakwood. In order to collect this data, we we set the speed thresholds of what we. Within the within the parameters that the system allows and what we would consider. I hate to say acceptable, speed deviations. But for for purposes of this meeting, we considered compliant, less than five miles an hour over the posted speed limit. We identified a medium risk is five to nine miles over the speed limit. Then being in a residential area, we identified high risk is being greater than ten miles over the speed limit. When we took all those monitors and all that data. And compiled that information, we came came out with an overall combined compliance rate of just under ninety-eight percent. So meaning, and on any given day, ninety-eight percent of the vehicles are traveling within five miles an hour of posted speed limit in the neighborhoods. We did see a small. Number of medium-risk vehicles, again, traveling between five and nine miles an hour over the speed limit of a twenty-five miles an hour. So that means that they were, you know, could be upwards up to thirty, thirty-four miles an hour in residential neighborhood. We saw a violation rate of one point six percent. The high risk was even less. We saw. Just under a quarter of one percent violation rate on a daily rate. So while the data shows that we don't have a pervasive speed problem, I think it's noteworthy to say that. We don't have a, that we, we can't say there's no violations taking place. And I know every one of you has been approached at times from a resident, talking about cars that they see traveling forty to forty-five, fifty miles an hour potentially in their neighborhood. And we can't say that's not happening. I think it's very plausible that at times that does happen, as it does in any street, but the incident rate of that is very low. That was demonstrated statistically by the data that came out of the monitors. So I was pleased to see that we had a pretty high compliance rate. And this is generally reflective of most of the studies that we've done in other subdivisions throughout the of the village. If I ask any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Trustee Pierce.
Yeah, since I was the one who asked for, I I'll just say, first of all, I appreciate all the work you all have done there. I was approached by at least one resident who was very appreciative that the signs, the radar signs are up in Oakwood Knolls. When they're up and not registering, I get questions on why aren't they showing the speed? But more specifically, when they are showing the speed, it's a reminder to people that to slow down, so. I I think the concern people may have is what happens when the radar signs aren't there. So and that's a hard one to prove because I don't have a radar gun in my hand and if. The car's got a loud muffler or it's motorcycle with their classically loud motorcycle, I mean mufflers for safety sake. Then then the perception is that they're speeding, so it it there may not be an actual speeding issue there, but there may be a perception of speeding issue there. So at a minimum, if we don't move forward with some sort of traffic calming techniques. And not not just for Oakwood Knolls. I know Bowles Road is bad. I know Popper's perceived to be bad. I know. I know s- the, the, uh, Savage Road is perceived to be bad. So there's all sorts of areas that I'd be interested in traffic calming techniques. But at the minimum, maybe the sign, the radar signs being active do help over on those main roads. So maybe we should be installing them permanently to remind people you are speeding. And maybe that'll do it for a while. And the people who are complaining they're speeding can look up and say, oh, look, they're only doing twenty-six miles an hour.
You, you know, you brought up an interesting point, Trustee Pierce, in regards to the speed monitor. So when we place these, we, we tried to do a dual-layer approach to see if we saw any deviations in the, in the data that we're producing. We ran, um, part of the study with the speed monitor data, um, turned on so the drivers would see the speed that they were traveling. Then we also put them into what, what's called ghost mode where it's not going to display the speeds and it's going to continue to record that even though it's not indicating to the driver how fast they're going. We just wanted to see if we had any significant statistical anomalies in those two modes. And, and they were pretty consistent throughout the course of the study in both modes, but certainly, um, in did the visual reminder of drivers is, is certainly important. And one of, is one of the reasons we bought the monitors is to help, help remind drivers to go to the posted speed.
Where's the cost of one of those monitors?
I would have to check. They, they weren't inexpensive, but I can, uh, I, four thousand.
Yeah, they were about four thousand dollars apiece and then there was a, is it a yearly or monthly fee because they are connected?
I think it's a thousand dollars roughly per year per site, like the licensing.
Yeah, a- and to connect, to get the data through the internet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, trustee Maisick?
You know, at the last meeting, I brought up traffic calming in our, our veins coming into Antioch. And then we had a major crash at fifty-nine in, in Aaron Harbor with entrapment of a family. I just don't understand why this board doesn't want to take action, follow up in letters sent to the state, pass a resolution to send to the state saying, we want our, our speeds lowered on fifty-nine going to Beechgroves, Beechgro Road to the school. Doesn't make sense to speed up to a stoplight going past Anastasia's and start, start worrying about public safe, life safety issues. Uh, people getting killed on one seventy-three. There was, there was four hundred, when a dog got killed, four hundred on Facebook, people screaming. Now, one person on, on this board said, oh, that's horrible, an absolute antiax, went up from the gas station when the dog got loose. The gas station by Walmart ran out from the car, ran across the one seventy-three, was killed. There was over four hundred responses on Facebook because someone was flying in a van. That van was never caught. People are just driving too fast and we got to take control of our main arteries coming into this town. You, you know, we, we had the group here and we should have said, you, you want to talk about family values? We don't, we want safety in our town. We don't want people driving. And I hate to be Nostradamus and say, we had, we had a family entrapment with, you could say what the injuries were with that family. You know it. And, and when's the next one going to happen? And a shame on anybody that's going to be friends and family. We sent a letter to the state that was never followed up by the previous mayor. So I don't understand why we sit here and I gotta preach this every time. I can't tell you how many people I pronounced dead in the side of the road, but it's a lot.
I, I don't disagree with you, trustee Maisick, but our powers, uh, the Traffic Calming Committee do not extend onto the state highways.
Except the board level, we can pass something, send it to the state. We can send whoever.
It's a separate conversation.
That's, that's the conversation I'm having right now, the Traffic Calming Board. But I'm having it right now because I got it, I get an in on traffic calming. We're talking about traffic. So I'm having an in to get it on the agenda and I don't understand why I gotta sit there and beg. Everybody else gets stuff on the agenda here but me. And this is public, this is life safety. So, so you guys can all take what you want. That's all I gotta say on this issue.
All right. Thank you, uh, trustee Peterson.
I know that in our neighborhoods, the woods of Antioch, um, here in Harbor, Kennedy Homes out there, uh, off of Treever Road. I've seen people speeding through. If I'm just over at someone's house and I see people driving very fast. And I guess if they see, um, something that's going to clock them, they're, they're a little bit more mindful. I don't know what the answer is. I, I really don't, but somebody's going to get hurt. And I, you know, I've got three little grandsons in this town and it frightens me. It's, it's scary. I've, I've seen parents over on Woodc- Creek Drive years ago, when I lived over there, buy cones and put them in the road just to slow people down. And it worked. And, you know, they, they come in off of Tiffany Road and pull onto Wood Creek Drive and see these big orange cones and they would slow down. There were children playing on both sides of the road. So it, you know, they took it into their own hands. They're moved away now, but, uh, those kids are grown up. But they, they, parents are doing everything they can to stop people from speeding through their neighborhoods. And I, you know, I don't know what the answer is. I don't have the magic button, but we, I think we really do need to look at it. We really do. That's all I'd say.
All right. Thank you, trustee Bluthard.
Um, I like to think we had a, remember here, these people speeding in here are neighbors, our friends, everyone else. And, you know, it's, these signs, I don't know how well they work. It may, they work at the beginning, but once they know they're just a sign with a number on it, they're not, you know, after a week, they're gonna speed if they're gonna speed. So I mean, you could do your public, you know, uh, ad campaigns about speeding. You see them on the news, you see them on TV. We can do enforcement, which you do already. But I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna have to have a balancing act of, you know, do we want to put a squad car on every street and town to catch a speeder or, you know, do we have the resources to do that, so on and so forth? So I think it's a, you know, it's a tough call, but it, it's, you know, the signs, putting them up with the flashing this, the, the, the speed. I don't see the benefit of that in the long term. Might help temporarily in an area, but I just, um, you know, I agree with trustee Maisick, if there's issues regarding the state roads that we need to do something and notify the state. And, um, that's all I've got.
Thank you. You bring up a very important point with squad cars. We, we see the similar, uh, behavior response when we do do direct enforcement campaigns. And we put a squad cars in the area saturated the track enforcement for, you know, period of week, two weeks, thirty days, you know, whatever that defined period is. And during that time, when the squads are present, we get a very significant compliance rate. We see the speech drop, people become more aware of it. But as soon as that squad car is gone, similar to the signs, drivers resume their own, their old habits. So it's, it's quandary.
Thank you, trustee Berman.
Um, I, I as well think there, you know, this is a major issue. Um, and it, it's, I feel it's even more so an issue when it, you have a neighborhood that doesn't have sidewalks for younger children to, you know, use rather than having to be walking in gravel on the road. You know, I, I can tell you, I do not allow my son to go across the street by himself because, especially right in our neighborhood, because there are cars that are speeding like crazy. And, um, you know, you can yell, you can say whatever and they, it, it doesn't faze them. They don't care. They just keep going. And, um, I, to be honest, I'm surprised that a child has not been hurrying out.
Your Honor? Yes? Oh, let me, uh, go to trustee Domeniac and then I'll go back down. Trustee Domeniac?
Unfortunately, we can't control people's wrong behavior. I do want the record to, to show though that as a member of the board, I am as concerned as other members of the board regarding life safety and the fact that we have speeding. In fact, I can think back to before I became, uh, trustee, speaking at a village board meeting about the problems that we have on one seventy-three. Having said that, I think, you know, we can certainly go to the state. I know that, um, when I first came on board, uh, the state rep, uh, worked with me to get speed study done on fifty-nine because I live in Landmark Point and come in off of, uh, fifty-nine in and out there. And, um, just as the chief has, has stated, um, when you put those, uh, those items in place for people to, um, monitor speeding, we found that there wasn't a whole lot of speeding. I know that's not the case. I try to get out of my subdivision every day. So, um, I, I'm, I, I am also hampered in my thinking about how do you fix people's bad behavior? So we could certainly go to the state and ask them to lower the speed limit. Um, the speed limit on the highway is sixty, sixty-five. And I don't know about the rest of you, but everybody's going at least eighty. So, um, we can certainly try to reduce speed limits, but I don't think that's going to fix the problem.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Tonight's conversation was about, uh, the residential traffic calming, I believe. But I, I do have to say with trustee Maisick, I, I listened on North Avenue on Friday and Saturday nights when the motorcycles are doing, it's, the sound of them sounds like they're doing ninety miles an hour. The little pocket rockets or whatever are shooting down North Avenue. You get on one seventy-three and the, as, as he says, you're taking your life and into risk. So, you know, in, in, in that aspect, we, we do need to think about that and how to solve that. I, I, I'd like the board to start thinking in the subdivisions, how can we do concrete steps that, that reduce the perception of speeding? And, and I know that when the direct enforcement's there, they're not, people slow down. I, but I can also say, I can hear those same pocket rockets that are on North Avenue, making their little lap around Oakwood and Maplewood. So we need to, to do something in neighborhoods. And I, I really think the time has come that we start looking at, um, traffic calming techniques beyond signs and, and enforcement, whether it's reducing the width of roads at certain points or plateaus or whatever. They do it in Chicago and they figured out how to make it work. I know we're smarter up here and we should be able to figure out how to make it work. So, um, a suggestion maybe for the chief is, I'm from South Carolina and they had tremendous, uh, speeding issues down there. And they, they formed the Wolf Pack. They called it Wolf Pack and they're out there aggressively, uh, they pulled over speeders non-stop with this Wolf Pack and they found all sorts of problems when they did that. Maybe with the local communities, you guys could form up and share, share officers to, to Wolf Pack. I don't know. I don't know about jurisdiction. I'm just trying to brainstorm here. But we need to work on our state roads to enforce the speed limits. And we don't have all the manpower ourselves and the state isn't responding. So we need, we need to do something with that, but I think we need to, right now, the, the action is for the subdivisions where kids are playing.
Thank you. Any other, uh, trustee comments? It's a trustee Peterson.
I, I just have one. May- maybe we could reach out to the homeowners associations and talk to them. I'm sure that there are a lot of people who live in these neighborhoods that feel the same way we all feel up here. And they don't know what to do, but maybe if, from a homeowners association with their newsletters or, um, communication with them, possibly, you know, say, um, you know, we need to slow down in our neighborhood. I remember when they did a traffic study in, in the woods of Antioch, the only people that got tickets were people who lived there. I mean, but, so hope, you know, I'm just wondering if you could, we could reach out to them individually, to all these neighborhoods. And maybe collectively, they can help their own neighborhood slow down, just by talking.
I think that's a great suggestion. You know, if it's a community problem, the community can certainly participate in the solution. Certainly get the word out that speeding is dangerous. Um, so I, 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 my, thank you all for the comments. Um, I don't disagree with anything that I think I heard here tonight. I guess what I'm trying to ascertain is, you know, per the policy that we have, if through enforcement, directed enforcement and monitoring, um, we, we still think we have problems. The next step is physical traffic calming measures, which would, this would be chicanes, neck downs, perhaps there are striping solutions. There are other, I call it pavement patty, but there are things that you can stick to the pavement that look like a child chasing a ball. I think that will work for a while. But once somebody learns it's just a sticker on the pavement, they'll continue speeding, you know? I don't know if it'll change the behavior on a, on a more longer lasting basis. But I guess the question, you know, I'd like, like the board to weigh in on is, um, do, do you want me to start those engineering studies and engage the engineers? Uh, to, to begin physical measure, you know, I think we're talking about the next step would be physical measures. The streets that trustee Pierce has identified qualify. Um, you do have a provision in here that before a physical measure would be implemented, you could have, I believe it's a seventy-five percent of the neighborhood sign a petition says they want it. You could, you know, I, I just don't want to sound negative, but y- you may be in a situation where you put in a physical measure like a speed table and you have a bunch of people come here and say, we don't want that in our neighborhood. It's too noisy. It's damaged my car. It, wha- whatever. So there's, there's good and bad to some of these measures, but I think the next step is, do, do you want me to start spending money with a consulting firm to come up with, um, solutions that meet with MUTCD, you know, that, that are going to be viewed as, you know, installed properly and defensible in the case that we, you know, we did have a lawsuit generated based on one of these things, you know, in the case there were perhaps an injury from something we install. We want to make sure we're very defensible. So that's really the question. Do, do you want staff, uh, to begin expenditures on, you know, physical measures, whatever they may be? On these streets or other streets?
Mayor.
Yeah, uh, go ahead, Mary.
Just to answer your question, Jim, where do you start? How do you prioritize? I mean, I was at an association meeting a couple of weeks ago here over in Landmark Point and the big topic of conversation was speeding. And could I talk to the police chief about putting squad cars here, which I haven't done because, for a lot of reasons. But obviously we can't just have a squad car sit in Landmark Point or miss the code. So where do you start? I think that's part of the challenge. I do agree with trustee Pierce that perhaps if we can get some more support for, uh, speeding on one seventy-three and, and fifty-nine, that would help as well. But it's just, I'm not against physical measures. I just don't know where you start. And where do you end?
It's a great question and I don't know that there is a great answer for that. I think people would look like, certainly like it to start in their own neighborhoods. And anybody, wherever they live, they're gonna say, start at my neighborhood. Trustee Pierce is suggesting to start it on Oakland.
I have a couple of thoughts on this. Well, one of them is, if you're watching this, you know, most of the complaints I see are, you know, not to, uh, pinpoint people, but most of the complaints in the subdivisions, I see are newer drivers, usually teenagers. So, you know, for your parents, talk to your kids about those items. I would suggest, you know, uh, that we keep this on our radar, no pun intended, that we continue to talk through this, maybe come back with. You know, I don't personally know what all of the traffic calming measures can be. You know, I would like to see obviously the, the least expensive, but the most effective traffic calming measures, if that's the way we go. So maybe as we talk through this, we come back with, hey, these are the ten things that are in communities that people use. Whatever you said, the, the Sally, whatever her name was. I never heard of such a thing in my life.
Pavement patty.
Pavement patty, yes. So, you know, I would like to see that. And in the interim, I would still like to see, um, the law firm, you know, draft a letter to our local authorities, state authorities, and, and just express our concern. So I think it's twofold. I think we do the letter again and keep pressure on them. But then, you know, get some, before we go to engineering, maybe let's see what these options are. Cause I don't, I don't know if anybody knows what they all are on this board.
Well, and if we could prioritize and maybe to Trina's point, we start with neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks.
And we also, I'm sorry.
Trustee Peterson, then trustee Pierce.
Okay. I, and why don't we start with reaching out to the homeowners associations and asking them to put that on their agenda at their meetings to talk to their neighbors and say, we've got a problem here and we really need to address it and send out, they can send out a letter to their homeowners and say, you know, this is about our kids. And, you know, slow down. I mean, we could start there, at least communication wise.
And, and some of those communications have, have already started. Um, I participated in a HOA meeting. I participated in a HOA meeting two months ago with the Club Lends and speeding was a topic of concern. And it seems that the most residents in that neighborhood recognize that most of the problem is originating from within their own community. So I think you're spot on. Partnering with them, I think, would be a wise approach to try to help them echo our messaging. You know, we're trying to get creative, you know, to board a notice over the next couple of weeks. We've outfitted us, one of our new squad cars is a traffic car to try to specifically be a little bit more stealthy in our approach to these things. Let people guess and not know if it's a squad car sitting up ahead or if it's, you know, we got a fully marked car. It's very easy to spot from a great, great distance away and people slow down before we can get them on a radar reading. We've outfitted a traffic car. You'll, you'll see it around town starting next week probably with some enhanced traffic enforcement equipment that's being installed in it. We're going to dedicate the LiDAR, which is the laser, which can get you from any angle and pretty much defeat any radar detector. Try to give some element of surprise. And the markings are very difficult to see during the daylight, but are highly visible at night when light reflects it for the officer's safety perspective. But it was specifically outfitted and designed for traffic enforcement. So we're going to try to use some creative tools such as that to enhance our programs.
Trustee Pierce, then trustee Berman.
I do like trustee Peterson's communication with the HOA's idea. Because our experience over the years has been, it's the residents in those subdivisions that are mainly doing the speeding within the subdivisions. I also think it would be a good idea. I mean, I know what most of the traffic calming techniques are because I've looked at it over the last twenty years as I've tried to fight for it. But I think maybe putting together suggestions of what is out there for the rest of the board may be a good thing. But I also think we know which roads are the main roads. It's the, the long roads that are uninterrupted in this, in the subdivisions, whether it's the Club Lends with the big circle or, you know, the main road that goes through, or New Haven with the big circle, or, or Haron Harbor, which has Bowles Road that goes from one end to the other, or, or Oakwood Knolls that has Oakwood and Maplewood. And it's mainly Oakwood that's the worst. You know, or, but we know generally which roads there are, whether it's popular in the, in the woods. We know which road that people speed on there. So we, I think the police and the village generally knows what roads are the worst roads. So that we could experiment on. And I don't think just Oakwood Knolls deserves this. I think a lot of these subdivisions need this.
All right, that's, that's great feedback. So we'll make sure we get a letter out to the state. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you finish. Then trustee Berman had one comment.
No, I prefer.
Trustee Berman?
Just really quick to, I agree that the, you know, communicating with the HOA, that's, that's a great idea. However, there are neighborhoods that do not have HOAs. And there are also neighborhoods that don't, a lot of times don't have sidewalks either. So I think we also need to look into figuring out what that first step would be for them as well.
Okay, so in summary, we're going to send a letter about the arterials.
You're going to send it to the reps too?
We'll, we'll send it to everybody we can think of.
We'll send it to Joyce Mason, Weber, Lake County.
And Linda Peterson. There's some that, this county roads, where they have its county road, that should be easier to fix.
Okay, we'll also design some kind of outreach effort to the HOAs and see if we can get some messaging and come up with a a public messaging initiative to, to bring awareness to it.
Slow down.
And then we'll identify some, some measures and maybe I'll ask the consultant. It shouldn't take any money to have our consultant come here and speak more intelligently to it. I'll get somebody in their traffic department to come and they probably have some more experience in this in other communities and have them maybe identify all of these different measures that are taken and hopefully the, the successful ones and things that we can, we can implement. So I'll, we'll take those three steps if that's, sounds reasonable to the board.
In agreement. Thank you. All right, now, any other business? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Cal meeting. Motion trustee Boothard. Second trustee Dominiac. Roll please. Six voting yes, zero voting no. Meeting's adjourned. Let's, it is eight oh five on my watch right now. So let's take a five-minute break and we will, we'll resume at eight ten with the regular board meeting.
Call the regular meeting to order at a little bit late, eight fourteen. Roll, please.
President.
Here.
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 Here. Any citizens wishing to address the board online or in person?
If you are joining from a telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. On an Android or iOS device, tap more than raise hand. On a computer, click raise hand in the Zoom controls.
All right, while we think about that, I will go through the consent agenda. If anybody raises their hand, please let me know. There are four items on the consent agenda. Approval of the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one public hearing and regular meeting minutes as presented. Approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a second amendment to agreement for shared parking lot southwest of Depot Street and Cunningham Drive with the United Methodist Church of Antioch, resolution number twenty one dash fifty five. Approval of a resolution authorizing the ACHS annual homecoming parade to be held on October fourteenth, twenty twenty one, resolution twenty one dash fifty six, and approval of a resolution authorizing a special event liquor license for the Antioch Broccoli Club for the annual pork chop barbecue and dinner, resolution twenty one dash fifty seven. Any trustees wish to remove any of these items from their consent agenda? If not, I'd ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Peterson, second by trustee Dominiac. Roll, please.
I.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no. Consent agenda items are approved. Regular business first is consideration and approval of payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff. I need a motion in a second.
I move to approve the accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty three cents.
Motion by trustee Peterson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Bluthart. Any discussion? All right, roll, please.
I.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero no motion carries. Item number six, consideration and approval of a resolution approving a waiver of fees for the Antioch Library proposed addition, resolution twenty one dash fifty eight. I need a motion in a second, please. I have a motion from trustee Maisick, a second from trustee Dominiac. Discussion, please. Trustee Pierce.
How much are we actually going to be waiving with this?
I don't have that number yet, trustee. They've not submitted the building plans yet. They did make this request in April, but we have not been able to calculate the fees as of right now because we've not reviewed the building plans.
But we don't know.
I don't know. I don't want to make any representations. Again, it would be the building permit fees, some missing fees, waivers. There's no sanitary fees. We're not waiving any fees like that, but we're just talking about at this point, I don't have a calculation of that fee yet.
Thank you.
Trustee Maisick.
This is typically we waive building permits for other taxing bodies.
Well, this is, yeah, there's really a two-part discussion here. I'm glad you raised that. Typically, we've had not-for-profits come in before the board. The question is, you know, what not only whether this is appropriate, i.e. waiving the fees for the library, but whether it be appropriate to have a comprehensive policy, to consider a policy that we, as a matter of fact, just waive fees for basically other governmental bodies, not-for-profits. If some builders do that, the question is, would the board be comfortable with that?
I couldn't imagine charging a fee to the fire department. They wanted.
Correct. Correct. Our libraries, school districts, but right now, we don't have an ordinance, so that's why we come before you each time. That's our policy. The question is, does it make sense to have a comprehensive ordinance to do that? Then we wouldn't have to discuss this.
Because all you do is take money from one pocket.
Correct. Taxpayers are paying for this.
Okay. Trustee Peterson.
Yeah, an ordinance would be appropriate. I'd like to see that.
Thank you, trustee Bluthart.
I agree that an ordinance would be nice. I just have one comment on it. I mean, the library went to referendum to get the money to pay for this, this program. It's not something that they're, you know, they went out and the taxpayers agreed to fund that for them. If we're incurring expenses on the village side that, and I don't know what they are, and you don't know at this point, we're basically now we're spending money on something that the taxpayers agreed to spend at the, at the library level. That would be my only concern is that we're, you know, they've already got the people to agree to spend that money. Now we're spending our money to, you know, and to save them some. I understand that whole process and, and everything else, but I would just like to, or I would be comfortable voting on something like this. I'd like to know how much we're waiving.
We can bring that back. I mean, we can, we can, you know, that we expect the building plans to be submitted in a timely fashion. They're talking about sometime this fall or late fall construction.
When would, when would they, these fees be due?
Theoretically, they would be due before we issue a building permit. I mean, theoretically, they were not, they were not a not-for-profit developer. We would not issue a building permit until all the fees were paid.
Point of clarification, we would not waive an escrow requirement. So if we have any out-of-pocket expenses for inspection, review, or anything like that legal sometimes, we would still require an escrow, so the village would not be out of pocket.
Okay. That's fine.
Trustee Berman.
Yeah, I agree. I would like to know what those fees are going to be before.
That's fine. We can bring them back once we have the calculation.
Trustee Dominiac.
Oh, do we need to pass this tonight, or can we take?
I mean, I think we could tell this.
No, we, I can bring it back. Just see, I can bring it back. Once I have ascertain a number, maybe at that point, I'll also, based on direction I'm getting, I'll bring back an ordinance, a more comprehensive ordinance that would waive fees for not-for-profits for building fees, again, a pass-through fee or a sanitary tap, those, we have to pay for those. So those, we would not waive as a policy, but permit fees, things like that, standard fees, we would waive for, for governmental bodies and not-for-profits.
Let me make the motion to table it.
Well, that was my question. And if we made the motion and seconded it, can we make the motion to table it?
Sure.
Yeah, we have a motion from trustee Maisick and a second by trustee Pierce to table this into a later, later meeting. Yep, roll call.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. It's tabled. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, consideration and approval of an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter One of the Municipal Code of Antioch regarding general traffic regulations, ordinance twenty one dash eight dash twenty seven. Chief Dutchell.
As you recall, we discussed at the board, or I'm sorry, the Cow meeting last time, change in the village traffic code regarding display of power restrictions. This was in response to concerns brought to board members by members of the community, which were presented to us, about loud and unnecessarily vehicle noises, specifically squealing tires, excessive accelerations, revving the engines, and admitting of unnecessary and loud muffler noises or exhaust smoke. This brings us to a place that's a little bit more enforceable, a little bit more practical for the local PDU to enforce than the, the IVC is. So it's our hope that will give us another tool in our, in our kit to help deal with some of the problems, similar to what trustee Pierce brought up in the last discussion.
I move to approve this waiving the second reading.
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Dominiac waiving second reading, second by trustee Bluthart. Discussion. Trustee Pierce.
No discussion, Your Honor.
Trustee Maisick.
I got one, and I just want to make sure I'm not anti-police. So my, my, my question with this is, one, how do we communicate this to the public? Because then I'm more worried about, Jesus has become a tool for, you know, all cops are good cops, but this has become a, where all of a sudden, gives them a reason to pull them over, then gives them a reason, hey, I need to search your car, or start, start other, other stuff that maybe shouldn't happen. A newer officer, not, not a trained officer. So, so the Fourth Amendment might be violated. I'm for this. I just want the public to be informed, saying, I didn't know this tin can muffler was in violation. I bought it at Napa. They said it's fine. Then all of a sudden, we look like the, the police become the bad people, and I don't want anybody to hate the police.
I think, I think the easiest way is just going to be through communications, through our social media platforms, informing the community of the new ordinance, typically with any new ordinance that's going to result in enforcement. There's, you know, I guess for lack of a better term, what we would call a educational and grace period. People that are stopped for it are not going to be first offense, issued tickets. It's going to be an educational period. We're going to let them know what the restrictions are, what they're in violation of, and what they need to do to come into compliance of. Most of these are not designed to take enforcement action against your everyday driver that's coming through. It's specifically designed to target those that are, you know, in our residential areas, really getting on the accelerator hard, revving the engines, particularly in the downtown. I'm sure everyone had used, is that one of our restaurants trying to, trying to dine and subjected to somebody sitting in the stoplight revving the engine over and over, kind of creating a interruption in the, in the public peace downtown. And similarly with the, and some of the younger drivers in particular with their diesel trucks, they would, they rather real high to get the black smoke pouring. They think it's entertaining.
And I don't know enough about mufflers. That's standard muffler that's.
Well, a lot of, well, a lot of them are standard mufflers that they could do this with, but it's, it's usually due to a unnecessarily, unnecessary driving behavior. This, this is going to be individuals that are on their way to breaking another law. You know, if they're hammering the accelerator that hard, they're probably on their way to exceeding the posted speed limit. So it gives us an early intervention tool to try to address some of these other issues. You know, certainly, I wouldn't expect, you know, you'd be surprised sometimes what, what comes out of a simple ordinance violation stop with the.
I'm agreeing. I just want both sides where we don't get a bunch of kids growing up to be capators.
Sure. No, and I think, realistically, you know, I mean, our officers are very well-trained in Fourth Amendment implications, and they've got to have something beyond just a simple violation to go searching somebody's car. You know, it's not like pour people over for a minor violation, pull them out of the car and toss it. There's usually, usually more that leads up to that, you know, signs and symptoms, I guess, of other illicit behaviors.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson.
I don't have any comments on this.
Trustee Bluthart.
No question.
Trustee Berman.
No questions.
Trustee Dominiac.
I just want to thank the chief again for moving so quickly on this when I asked for it. And I think we also need to make sure that the businesses know that if there's any repeat offenders that they feel are deliberately gunning their engines or rubbing their engines, that they can contact you and let you know so that there can be some follow-up. But thank you for getting this done. I think it's great.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hi.
And I like that last comment to be a group of, let's call for noise, but I'll vote yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero no. Motion carries. Next item is, again, consideration and approval of an ordinance amending Section two, six, dash, two, dash, eight of the Municipal Code of Antioch regarding fireworks, ordinance twenty one dash oh eight dash twenty eight. Chief Dutchell.
Sure. Once again, as you recall at the last Cow, we, we discussed some changes in our local fireworks legislation. We had existing language that applied to a regulation of sales and possession, but we did not have any real appropriate local legislation to deal with those discharging fireworks within our limits. We have stricken all of the permitting language that was in the original draft of the ordinance and referred that back to the fire department and state fire marshal at the board's direction. So there really is no significant changes in the language regarding sales of or possession of fireworks. There is just some updates to bring us up in the modern times a little bit, and then there was the addition of the offense of unlawful discharge of fireworks.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Pierce.
Second reading.
Second.
The motion from trustee Pierce waiving second reading, second by trustee Dominiac. Discussion. Trustee Pierce.
Just quickly, what are, what are the penalties generally for, this may be for the attorney, for discharging unlawfully fireworks within the village? It refers to Section six dash two dash ten, but there, that wasn't included with the package.
I will, if you give me one moment, I'll be able, Mr. Chair, if you give me one moment, I'll be able to answer that question. There are a graduated scale, I believe, starting with a hundred or two hundred and fifty dollars, going all the way up to five hundred dollars, but it's not mine to guess. Give me two minutes, and I'll have an exact answer.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure the public's aware of what penalties there are.
Sure. Trustee Maisick.
I'll wait for, I'll wait for the, the answer.
Trustee Peterson.
I have no questions.
Trustee Bluthart. No questions. Trustee Berman.
No questions.
Trustee Dominiac.
No questions.
Okay, so we're just gonna start the timer on Jimmy here. He's usually the one starting the timer, but we'll start.
I can play Jeopardy music.
What section is the fees?
We did have a discussion at the last meeting about taking a look at our fees.
Yeah. Well, he is.
Any person violation, shall be fined at less than fifty dollars, no more than seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll get the best.
Yes, I will go through, there's a table underneath that, and in that table, there are some certain specific expenses under that section one, which is fifty, one hundred, two fifty, and two fifty. Thank you, ma'am.
Is that fifty for the first offense, or is it determined by the, the fact that some guy shooting off bottle rockets and getting little pops in the sky, and you got somebody else who's shooting off a three thousand dollar shell that almost levels houses?
The distinguishing characteristics such that as that are not in there. So there's not an aggravation of the fee amounts. A firework is a firework, is a firework. It's more of a threshold issue rather than a capacity one. So you're shooting off a firework, whether it's a bottle rocket or not fireworks connoisseur, but I guess there's like an A80s or an A80, it doesn't matter. You're getting a fifty that time, and then it graduates up to two hundred and fifty dollars for a second, just stated. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Thank you. And we do five hundreds.
Trustee Pierce, any discussion?
I just think we need to look at our penalty phases at future date because if somebody's popping off a thousand dollar firework, he doesn't care if he gets a fifty dollar ticket.
And that's been an ongoing discussion between the administrator and myself. We recognize that many of our current fine structures need to be addressed. That's a rather large project that will take place in the near future. Thank you.
Trustee Maisick.
I got nothing.
Trustee Peterson.
No comments.
Trustee Bluthart.
No comments.
Trustee Berman.
No comment.
Trustee Dominiac.
Can we put a time certain on taking another look at these fees? I think trustee Pierce makes a good point about the size of the firework that set off versus the fine. If we pass this tonight, can we put a time on looking at it again? Because we did talk about this at the last Cow, if I remember correctly, that we were going to look at the fees.
Sure, we could ask staff to put this on the agenda, maybe in a month, two months? Yeah, two months, just to, we're past the high season of fireworks, hopefully. So based on that, I would entertain a roll call.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. Last item on the regular business is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the necessary expenses for the mayor, elected officials, and staff to attend the twenty twenty one Illinois Municipal League Annual Conference Resolution twenty one dash fifty nine. Mr. Keim, do you want to say anything about this, or?
Only that this is a requirement per state statute that elected officials approve. This is a resolution, a resolution to make the expense expenditures related to attending the conference.
Is it white?
It is in Chicago. So this is, is a newer statute in the last four or five years.
Motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so I think I have a, a motion from trustee Dominiac, a second from trustee Peterson. Any discussion? Trustee Pierce.
I, I would like to see after people attend, what exactly we spend on this on a yearly basis. I know staff generally go, certain staff members generally go, when I was first elected, which is just a couple of months ago, years, hopefully. Everybody was going, and it became quite expensive and turned into, going down there to have expensive dinners and expensive hotel rooms and expensive parties that, at the expense of law firms and engineering firms and all sorts of firms that wanted to gather business. And, you know, so I, I think the practice became, the staff went down there for the classes, and most of the politicians stayed home. But I know we've got a new class of politicians here that are on their first terms and just learning their, they're learning how to be a village trustee or a mayor or whatever. And it may be good to go for a couple of times to see what, what is actually out there. After that, I.
I never went.
I only went one time. I said, that's it. You can go.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the side? Trustee Maisick.
No.
Over here, any discussion?
I just have a question about, is there a policy for what expenses are covered? I mean, if it's in Chicago, I can't see why anybody would need to stay in a hotel. It basically would be mileage and, and tolls or parking, right? I mean, what's the policy? What are we approving?
There's a, a policy for employees, but not necess, I don't think our, our employee policy covers elected officials.
I mean, I'm fine with passing this, but I think we need to have a policy and an expectation that people aren't going to go downtown and stay overnight if, and have dinner somewhere. And, you know, maybe we take that employee policy and extend it.
I, I think our employees, some of them commute back and forth, and some of them stay the night. And some of the classes and meetings they have down there start early in the morning and some are later in the afternoon, so it may become a problem with the commute times. I mean, I, I was working on, out in the page today, and it took me an hour and a half to get here for this meeting, so.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know if we want our employees.
Years that I commuted back and forth, I guess I see it differently.
Yeah.
Driving the sister.
Trustee Peterson.
I think that they should spend the night, and, and that's a lot to ask for our staff to take time away from their families on a weekend and go down there and do what they need to do and go to all these seminars. We, they deserve to have a dinner, and they deserve to be able to sleep there and get up in the morning and do it all over again. So I'm totally in favor of them doing that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean staff. I was just thinking about any of us that were going to go. But it's just my opinion.
Any other discussion? And I, there's a, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. There is one more board meeting before the IML. Actually, there's, there's two probably. There's the eighth, September the eighth, and then fourteen is after. There will be twenty second, but that'll be right before it. So we can advise as to what the policies are on September the eighth. Trustee, I just do not know them off the top of my head. I mean, I apologize for that. I do know that there are some evening seminars, and there are some morning seminars as well. Many of us have attended the IML.
Yeah, and just for clarity, I think my question about the policy is that are there limits? You could stay at the Peninsula Hotel, or you could stay at the Venue Hotel, and there would be a big difference. That's, that is really more my question.
And there is a limit. And again, trustee, I apologize, but it escapes me what it is. But it is the standard rate. So for example, I don't think it would allow for the Drake or the Four Seasons or anything like that. Or if you wanted to stay there, I believe your reimbursement amount, if you wanted to stay at the Drake, for example, your reimbursement amount would be the, I believe, the average or some consumer average, and then you could pay the overage if you wanted to stay, if that was your pleasure to stay at the Peninsula.
Thank you for that, because I think the genesis of this statute was not anybody, obviously, from Antioch, but in other communities that were not doing what you just said and staying at very elaborate places and spending a lot of taxpayer money. staying at very elaborate places and spending a lot of taxpayer money.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll take a roll on this.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. Any administrators report?
No report tonight, Your Honor.
Any village clerk report? Any trustee reports?
I have no report tonight. I would request a brief executive session for personnel.
Yes.
Okay.
I just, are we going to go down the line, or no?
Yeah, we'll go down the line. I just didn't, I was kind of looking. That's right. Anybody on the right-hand side have a report?
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask that we can do some type of, maybe one day, posted for, since we, we had a storm, some cleanup, maybe open holes, or where trees are down, Public Works. Trees and streets. I don't know if we could set a date. I got trees in Aaron Harbor down in Sated Street.
I think you discussed this at staff a little bit this morning. Yeah, the cleanup has begun, but we, we will allow some time.
So someone puts trees out that are falling down their yard at, at the road edge.
Right, right. If they have branches and debris.
Yeah.
You see it's starting to appear at the side of the road now. We'll give it some time, because sometimes it takes some folks a little bit longer to get it out there, so we're not making multiple passes. But yeah, we can put something out there.
Trustee Peterson.
I have no report.
Trustee Bluthart, no report. Trustee Berman.
No report.
Trustee Dominiac.
I just want, I don't have a report, but with the chief there, and I'm sorry that the other officers aren't there, I just wanted to comment on how terrific the National Night Out was. I think you all really took it up multiple levels. It was excellent, the, the stuff that you had for the kids. But the other thing I wanted to share was that I had the opportunity, obviously, to speak to a lot of the officers and your command staff, and what really struck me was how many of them, no matter if they're brand new to the force or have been around for a really long time, how much they love working for Antioch. And I think that says a lot about your guidance and your leadership, chief, and as well as the caliber of all of the officers, and as well, it demonstrates that the people of Antioch really hold our police officers in very high regard, which I hope that you'll pass on if they don't know that, because of everything going on in the country around law enforcement. It's, it was just so great to hear all of these people say how much they love working and how lucky they are to be working in Antioch. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Trustee Dominiac, I do have the request to go into executive session by trustee Pierce to discuss personnel matters only. I entertain a motion as second with no further business to take place after executive session.
Second.
Motion by trustee Pierce, second by trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries.